All right. Call the, what is it, the Board of Learning Special Meeting Session. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Roll call. Vince here. David here. Ryan here.
Here.
Josh.
I know. They can't see your name.
Right here. Long meeting. It's trying to struggle. Roll call. Oh, I was trying. Hold it. No. Josh. Here. Kurt. Here. All right, was the meeting notified and recorded?
Yep, yep, meeting was properly noted and as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded.
All right. Scheduled presentation by guests and staffers. Our C C Unicycle Program. Hold it.
Neil.
You think who?
I don't know if everyone knows me, so I'm media director. I have 12 years. And in that first year, started media program, started the unicycle program for Valerie, Almet, Valance. So we got some unicycles donated and then about six years ago, I started writing grants so that now when kids starts the class, if you think it's, I say, when you go across that gym unassisted, this is your unicycle. Or it used to take 10, 12, 14 weeks to keep someone to use cycle and now takes two to five weeks. More patient there, so I teach about 30 plus people in a cycle every year. And I just received a $4,500 grant and that's not for all day before 10 cycles for each semester. I have one high school kid that helps me, Brad Iverson, and I found it. So we were banished outside when the COVID thing came on and actually found out we had cycling outside. So we go out now in the spring, but it works out whether otherwise we're in a large gym. We spend about a half hour playing games or not half the gym and they play sharks and nozzles or tags or whatever. I have seven giraffes, that's tall unicycles. And of course you can decorate those, you can parade. Quite a few juggle and we do balloon twisting into animals. It's a circus. And normally I would, when I'm coming from 10 here is I bring a few unicycles. And we go out on the parking lot, but they're super busy this week. Tomorrow night, national night out, we are doing unicycle demoing at 6:30. It's a six day event. We are balloon twisting for the whole two hours. On Sunday, we're in the Hammond Day Parade and then afterwards, we're invited to train to do some balloon twisting. And then 17th of August, we've been invited by Culvers up to their place. We're going to down learning wheel twisting for, I think it's a ball of kids care people. They bust them out, do everything with them and then we all get free calls. So it's a good program. There's people that are 65 people and they can continue coming once they learn because there's, they can learn to go backwards. They can freemount, there's probably 20, 30 skills or they can just learn unicycle. Vince's kid's unicycle. It's the coolest thing in earth, right?
Yeah, they still get on doing.
So it's, if you're having a bad day on Thursday, it's every Thursday, 38, September 8. Come on down, watch it. You can't help but smile. Or come and learn. So any questions? Okay. Have a good evening.
Well, anything with all Andy.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, next comments by four members of superintendent, just a recap of the board workshop and retreats. So I thought it was great. I thought it was really good to get a chance to get out of here and be in a little more of an informal session. I like the kind of the games and the spin that was put on it, just like the educational. I didn't win a prize. Candy or whatever, but I thought it was, I thought it was really good. It was exciting. I thought there's a lot of stuff that we worked on that was important and just kind of reaffirmed and just education on like really what our role is. For the school, so I thought it was great. Anybody else have?
I thought it was great. I asked Tim that we couldn't really back and then we did. I, it completely re-energized me. I, you know, for a long time and I just love the board. I'm proud to be associated with this board and I think we really do, I mean, Lee's good at affirming how good we are. But I don't think it's B S. I think we do things that are really good for kids and it really is an honor and privilege to be a part of the board. And it's just brief. I think we're doing good stuff for kids. Good stuff. If we can figure out the board agenda on that, we'd be perfect.
I complimented.
That was good. Thank for, maybe I was speaking for the other nuance, but there was also the time where we went through on some of the things to do, not to do. Like that, so I think that was also another good training for, for me.
It felt the way that, you know, we've had questions and we get bits and pieces, but it was kind of like, here it is. And you get to just know each other on a different level as well, instead of just in a meeting format. So I think that was helpful.
Does anyone else? Hold it. Anyway. No. Summarize it well, but it was certainly eight hours well spent. It was nice adding the admin team this time too as well, for almost the same reasons. It was new. Yeah.
So that was easy one. Next, the project mallard update.
Was really nothing new to report. You know, again, I'm the one vote of the five members on the joint review board. That's one of the steps in the process. That meeting is yet to be determined and scheduled. Follow up tonight that there is a town hall meeting. Robert, the park building next Thursday at 6:30. So please, you know, I'm still in the information gathering phase, I think like most of us are, just trying to gather as much information to make an informed vote. At the near future.
Just avoid on the joint.
Joint review board. So which is strictly regarding the T I D and the T I F.
Anyone else have anything on the project mallard? Regards to the school. All right, next on the agenda, the consideration of the consent agenda. Austin. Who approved the consent agenda questions? So again, any further questions or concerns? Maybe read it to how many. A part-time correspondence there. Just reached that and it's. So the part-time, six part-time and no full-time. Regular amount of patients for students in the virtual courses. So there. I'm motion. Second. All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Approved. Next, the administrative reports, discussion regarding the high school German program.
So I wanted to do an F Y Y with the board with the recent resignation of our high school and middle school German education teacher. I wanted to again discuss or create discussion like we had probably two years ago, two or three years ago. An opportunity that we saw and just the reality of the availability of German teachers. So with that, you know, we've asked Kurt to be here, Kurt Soderberg, Pete Newsbaum, McBean and I, as consultant, discussed this. We had more information under gather, so with that Kurt has some information and proposal that we wanted to bring to the board's attention as an F Y I in the discussion.
Thanks, Tim. Evening, everyone. Thank you for the time to be here, discuss this with you. As Tim mentioned, on July 26, we used to give the resignation of our high school and middle school German teacher to take a different position and a position in different district. And so that got us looking at what the German covers around strength and program and so on, considering needs and other needs. And I think one of the most important things that the board does and that we do as administrators to provide thoughtful stewardship over the resources that we have. And looking at our German program, specifically at the high school, we have registered for this coming year 23 high school students enrolled in German. 15 in German 1, six in German 2, one German 3 and one German 4. As Tim mentioned, I had a conversation with Mr. Newsbaum, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Bean about this. But we started to talk about how do we maintain a program of low numbers when there are other needs and you have that? How to better serve students. And so after fairly lengthy discussion, we decided that it's time to look to fill that position and open a different location in high school. So it wasn't a hard question to ask because we've been talking about this to each other about three years. We have a need in the science department. In that position, a science teacher, one F T would best serve the students, fill our greatest need and certainly provide much better service in the present time. So for us, the clear answer was they have one F T in science, which would bring us to four science teachers. So prior to tonight, we had a well-together plan to try to make it work. And that caused some numbers that I don't think are my great core students in terms of class sizes. As of today, we are in vitamin three students in all the high school. We ended last year at 417, we sat there on 430 all year, dropped towards the end of the school days. Many of those kids are returning back from virtual, but we are vibrant and three. So with the three teachers to make it work in science, we had to do two sections and 32 AP biology. 32 students in one AP section is very difficult to do effectively. We had to have one section of 34 in AP environmental science. We had another challenging course. And we've had, because we have a big, nice big class of 147, as of today, we have sections of physical science that are 25 plus. So when you schedule for a high school, you'll see one section 30, one will be 22, and the flash we have is just over 25. So the other thing is that we had to, because we know we need to have a general physics and AP physics, that's kind of a, it's been a hole in the curriculum. Be able to fill that with a teacher outside of the science department. So adding a fourth teacher in science would allow us to reduce those numbers, those large sections in the AP classes and in freshman physical science to appropriate levels. We could then provide, if the person would have the right licensure, we could provide a general physics and AP physics from within the science department, which would allow, which would free up that teacher from the other department to go and work back in that, in their original department, which is the math department. And then it just would create greater flexibility for us to better serve the students. So in that, sun setting on the German program, without the discussion with Pete and Nick and Tim, what had happened, but I feel comfortable that sun setting in the German program, given the numbers, given the struggle that it's been. Our previous teacher, the one that just left, did a wonderful job. Dedicated teacher and standard reflection I've heard of all. But it becomes a matter of where we put our resources. So the way we sunset this is that the 15 German 1 students would go right into Spanish 1 instead. Or there's a virtual option for them for Wisconsin Virtual School. My recommendation would be to have those students go right into Spanish 1 because they have not even started the German program yet. The six students in the German 2 program would have the option to Wisconsin Virtual School or they could go back to Spanish 1 and go there. And some colleges are requiring two years of language, many are no longer requiring that. So it would hurt them to take a year of German to Spanish, but I would give them that choice to honor the fact that they started the German program. German 3 and German 4 is much more difficult. There are no online options, that one's Wisconsin Virtual School. So their, their opportunities would be very, very, we have one option we could look into, but I have not got the very clear answer yet. Digital provider, if you will. Wisconsin Virtual School should be the best virtual option, it's not available for 3 and 4. So those students would most likely just not have an option to consume the chair. As I mentioned, you know, it doesn't do, we want to give every kid everything they want, but at this point, it's here to the grace of all that. Take that, that opening and fill it to serve a really small number of students percentage-wise, the unicycl population as opposed to filling it in the science department when you get, you know, start to build there, I think would be perhaps a mistake. And so I bring that information to you tonight is to mention kind of as a heads up and certainly answer any questions and.
The German 1 students, do they have the option to go virtual?
They could.
Here's what they want.
They could.
I mean, to me, in my mind, there's a, there's a reason they chose German over Spanish and I don't know what that reason is, but they chose it. And I would hate to push them to Spanish if they're, they're kind of set under, and so if the option is there, is it, is it feasible? Is it easy to? Easy relative, but.
Sure. So the Wisconsin Virtual School program is all online, but there is a teacher, much like you do the correspondence class or college course. You see, there's timelines, there's deadlines and so on. That way it's easier to manage because it's not, here's your program, work through it. There's actually timeline, there is a cost to it. It's about 240 per student, put those kids in there. I assume you can respect they chose German 1 for a reason, we don't know the reason. My, my side step to that is they haven't begun the program yet. And so, but giving them the option, even if half of them decide, I've written that that seven kids that want to go to the virtual school, seven of them just do Spanish 1. We don't know until we ask.
I do know that in industry, manufacturing type industry, mechanical type of stuff, German is a very popular language. Second to English, but a very popular language in the technical side of things. So, you know, I, I like you said, we don't know what their reason was for choosing German. I don't know if they chose it because the Spanish class is a fault. I have no idea, you know, or if they just decided that I want to do this instead of Spanish.
Yeah, they may have a good experience with the previous teacher who knows the calculus. You bring up a fair point, but also then I did not mention that. We are able to absorb those students in Spanish without blowing them up. So we're in good shape to absorb those students.
Kurt, is there any U W R F option for the three and four students?
That is Steph, Paul said I bring the fight. We're still looking at, if you need, you might have an option. Yeah. We'll have to talk to those two students and see if that's a, that's something.
Does W V S offer a German 2?
They do. So one and two be offered, then not three. I think it's because it's such a complicated, it's so complicated at that point, it's difficult to roll them in.
And maybe Pete, just a brief explanation of what the German program looked like at the middle school and then your plan forward.
Well, when I first got there, eighth grade students chose either German or Spanish. And what we did working with this black and this player ball was we melted the two together. We called it foreign language. So they would teach the first week together and just talk about the, all the, I guess, thrills and wheels that went with foreign language and how application of learning a language is basically the same regardless of what it is. And then they went three weeks and three weeks and then they would flip flop. So the kids were exposed to both to allow them to make a better decision when they got to high school to which foreign language. So the impact this would have, obviously our foreign language would become a advantage. It doesn't change anything, it just all Spanish, which Miss Whack wouldn't have any problem whatsoever doing. So really no, outside of the fact they lose three weeks of exposure per year to, to German. That's, so six weeks total.
I think one of the things that's important to mention, the rich tradition here of German and that, and that it's, it's not an easy decision to make. As I mentioned, this wireball did a wonderful job. Her predecessor did a wonderful job. This is not an S E C only problem. We're seeing, talked to River Falls and Hudson and other places where they're three and four levels in Spanish and German and whatever else. They're just not sticking out. Our, because colleges don't require them anymore. So this should not, I don't want this to reflect poorly on anyone, the history of our German program. It really just comes down to a matter of managing resources.
Do you want approvals just for information to signify discussion? I mean, like any per, for the board to create, like this is an administrative thing, but thought we'd report just in case the board had adamant objections.
Maybe you said it, but you said it, there's like the cost for that, does the student pay that or?
What was I doing?
This wouldn't fit normal youth options because it's not a core players. Yeah, it's good to. Anything else? Everything?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, next on the agenda, the key work of our school board, discussion on future district needs and priorities.
Obviously later in the agenda, choosing a survey firm. So that would be engaging, that'd be engaging them tomorrow and getting those details worked out. Secondly, the postcards were printed to the post offices today, soliciting interested folks for community task force. Also sent it out on Facebook, website and emails to all current staff and parents and email addresses for, just kind of as a heads up. Those are folks that may not live in the district however, but every box holder district would get the postcard and get that opportunity and have time to sign up via the Google form. I checked about an hour ago, there are eight people so far just from the digital last that have signed up for that. And of course, just a reminder, those of you that have identified key folks you'd like to invite personally, touch base with them again and invite them to fill out that form, please. And then we'll report in two weeks and our first meeting is on Wednesday, 18th, first of six, right? Seven, six. Every other Wednesday. High school. Now they have, speaking of Mark and Johnson, they will, they have entertained possibly a tour of a local school districts exemplar C T program. But you know, they're going to put that out there, see if the committee's interested in, in going and seeing that if that's the direction they so choose.
So will the task force, they will make recommendations for the actual plan?
Correct.
Okay. Yep. We're not, we're not trying to spoon feed them. Exactly, you know, so.
Have their guiding things, maybe have decisions and make a recommendation that the board then would take input and either bless it or amend it or and for the resolution, if we get to that point, board decides to go forward, the resolution ended January.
Maybe there was, the last time there was some stuff identified as needs and through the district.
Well, I imagine that's the first meeting. Yeah. This is what we think we're going to be able.
And certainly.
Tell us how we get this done or you think.
Or, or is there something else? I mean, or other items or whatever, but it was just like, here's a starting point. Yeah. Or to start from, and I think some people took it as, this is what you have to do, but it was, that wasn't.
Well, I think the perception right now is we want to just come back with the same exact plan, you know, or something like that.
Well, encourage those people to show up. Yeah. This firsthand instead of filling in the blanks.
Yeah. Try to encourage them to.
Yep. Last time it was, we really were like, it's wide open and they kind of looked to us, I remember like, give us some ideas, you know, so then we, we did that and then they vetted, but you know, some people are like, I'm just going to show up, but I'm interested in them. That's great. So it depends, some want more information, some don't have their own. Truly grassroots.
Could they pick somebody to kind of run their meetings?
Well, it was, it was.
Is it a free for all?
Yeah, it was virtual the last time, so you had some facilitators kind of assigned to help run the rooms.
Yeah.
Right, because it was virtual, but we would call the meetings.
And Johnson.
Get the location.
Well, because you have to get in a room with so many people, it gets kind of hard to.
Yeah, they'll need somebody to.
And certainly courage or strongly encouraged, you know, board to be at all those meetings. Every, every citizen is welcome. They could certainly behoove you to be there at every meeting if you put this firsthand. And the admin and board typically kind of just are there for informational purposes and, you know, purposefully are, are stepping back and not, you know, want to give the impression that we're ramrodding anything or.
No, I mean, I like the idea that it's a community plan. They're going. Catcher.
Agreed, completely. Let's have it. On, next on the agenda, consideration or approval of the COVID mitigation plan for the 21, 22 school year.
All right, I'll share my screen here. All right, first slide is just disclaimer, you know, this is our, these are the plans based on the information we have and what we know and what is currently happening today. You know, can't possibly foresee everything and things may change and we'll make real time decisions if and when they happen. And certainly be doing that collaboratively, collaboratively. School board, this is the staff here, St. Craig Central, St. Craig County Public Health, we still meet weekly, who relies heavily on the D H S, Wisconsin D H S, the CDC guidance as well. We have been in contact with them again, like I said, weekly throughout the summer. All of these plans they're aware of and they have their blessing. They understand our position, we understand their position, they make recommendations strictly based on public health. We make decisions based on both public health and education, our students, the vision and mission, our students and community, the safety, our staff, students, community. And of course, they have to be flexible. So those three things are just put aside as a reminder. So this plan is much shorter than the one we proposed a year ago. We are a year smarter, have a year of experience under our belts and obviously things have changed quite a bit in terms of the COVID pandemic. So generally speaking, again, physical spaces, self-monitoring of illnesses and symptoms. And again, there is a chart here linked, talking about the symptoms of COVID-19, this is from the CDC. Again, outside your baseline, this is just a good visual reminder and helpful piece of information. Again, outside your baseline, this is just a good visual reminder and helpful piece of information for folks. Stripped throat, common cold, flu, asthma, seasonal allergies still exist as well. Um so just, uh it's a helpful piece to see all these COVID typically has all those. And then it shows kind of which ones are more common for those. Again, that's never changed. If you're sick, stay home is the main message. Uh we wanna reiterate there. Um we've got plenty of hand sanitizer left, uh that will be continued, continue to be readily available. Um currently, we'll maintain our dedicated care rooms uh for both, uh and they're separated for. Injuries and medication and the typical things that happened pre-COVID as well as the isolation room. Um for COVID. It's just kind of a differentiation between the 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 care room and the isolation room. If a student is symptomatic and suspected of COVID, obviously want them uh to be picked up and taken home ASAP. Six students and staff may not return until cleared by a school nurse or public health. Um if they're showing symptoms of COVID, obviously we strongly recommend uh that they get tested. And again, uh this link here shows the local sites and providers that do that testing. Um another development obviously is the turnaround time on that. It's it's generally much faster, about twenty four hours or less now. Um in terms of communication, um specifics regarding um. Students and staff will not be communicated again, uh communicated, obviously. Privacy laws, um but uh we still will do contact tracing. If uh a student or staff member is a close contact. It's uh been determined to be a close contact, which is three feet or less for fifteen minutes or more. Those people uh will be notified and identified that hey, you were a close contact. Um and that includes all school events and that is uh an F Y I. Um uh students are symptomatic, close contacts are strongly encouraged to get tested before returning to school. They will not be required to quarantine, however, it will not be a mandatory quarantine. If you were in close contact, it's an F Y I, be a hyper vigilant and aware of if you're symptomatic at all. And again, uh uh we are in concert with all the local school districts in 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 these plans. Um and the reason that we are not requiring mandatory close contacts uh at school to quarantine is through our past year. We found that it's very, very rare, like ninety five percent plus uh students who are close contact never became positive. Staff or students. However, household members uh are very likely to 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 become positive if they're close contact. So we still are requiring, as you can see, our quarantine. Students and staff who are household close contacts uh will be uh required to quarantine. And again, there's still the seven day, ten and fourteen day options um available there. Face coverings are optional regardless of vaccination vaccination status. That is our recommendation. Um we are comfortable with that being optional. Uh all these plans uh have options. That's the great thing about this plan and in in my opinion, we're presenting a plan that has options for folks. If you want to wear face masks, you're most welcome uh to do that. And if you don't, you're most welcome to not wear masks. Visitors, uh we went back and forth on um. And through a board retreat, kind of changed our mind on that. Uh we will allow visitors. Um they will be vetted by building administrators. What I mean by that is it's not like. Gonna be a little stringent with like allowing folks into the building, right? Uh we talked about showing up to eat lunch with, you know. Uh your student or whatever, that may not be allowed, we're thinking especially at first. Um certainly for special occasions, school functions, concerts and all that, uh we wanna bring our visitors back in. So it's it's again more um. More, I guess, encouraging for visitors compared to what we are, how we operated last year where it was only essential. Visitors like maintenance workers and such, uh we're opening it up. And again, that's gonna be um. Communicate with your building administrator in advance. And then we ask that they still complete a health screener, you know, like very common anywhere you go. And again, that'll be monitored, reassessed uh as time progresses and things could change, but we want to start out uh with that recommendation. And again, uh vaccination status, uh again, if even close contacts, uh face coverings, essential, doesn't matter. A close contact protocols will be followed regarding that is that's vaccination status. Transportation, again, uh master will, sorry.
So on that one, if you're vaccinated, but a kid has it. So just say the older is vaccinated, the younger against it, the older would be quarantined. Household. Household.
Household, that's our recommendation because again.
But that goes against like all of the, right? Or doesn't it? I mean, is on C D C or public, I mean, what, like? I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah. The latest that I have read is that they are saying that. If you are vaccinated, you will likely not contract it again, but you can spread it.
And we're differentiating between, again, the household.
Right, so if you live with somebody and you're that close.
The viral load is greater, this area is greater viral load.
This much of this like the honor system type stuff though.
Okay, I'll just ask you a question.
Yeah, I know, I'm just wondering, cause I.
It always is a honor system.
Okay, do we, we don't call families, like, we know you got a kid in the middle school or your high school or has it? Your other kid.
We we communicate with families if we know, yeah, absolutely. Once you're positive, there's there's no honor system. The county has that record, notifies us and informs us. So yeah, that, when you're positive, it's in uh the database. Within, yeah, like twenty four hours. So again, I say close contact protocols will be followed, right? It's it's the F Y I for school, close contacts, it's the, we are uh requiring you. To quarantine if it's a household. So so I understand your question. A good question. There's there's recommendations that. You know, so. We're making a decision to follow to the T and there's other recommendations. We're saying our experience.
I just was wondering if that one feels like it's more stringent than any other one that's out there and the rest are less. That's why I was just like consistency to insert those. Flow with it, that's what I was asking. I was.
And in our our school health personnel and Wendy or head nurses, um you know, approve, obviously, all of these, so. That's what we're recommending to start.
Because you can't ask if they're vaccinated.
Correct, yeah. Erica's point of folks in here, yeah, we, you know, we don't know if you've been vaccinated or not.
But you can break, you can break proof.
You could, uh uh students are in the Wisconsin immunization registry.
And honestly, it all starts like if the parent decides your kid's not feeling well, they. They decide if they're gonna get their kid tested, right? If you're not feeling well, you don't have to go get tested, so.
Oh, I understand that, what you're saying like that is not, but this is like after that.
Yes.
Right? And I was just asking like, cause like there's a point in time where the decision and information is made available and then that one is more stringent than. The rest of them, that was why I was.
But right now, I don't think there's a way before you, they talked about. Testing out of quarantine, there's options where you could go to, I don't think now you can. You've heard, you know, vaccinate out of quarantine, you know what I mean? There isn't that option right now. So you can't say I'm quarantined and then show the, show your vaccination card and then get out of that. That's not an option right now. Yeah. It's talked about, but in the case where you have. An older, younger sibling, you'd still be under the household vaccinated or not.
And again, there's recommendations. Some organizations are doing that, they're saying if you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine. But again, our experience um has shown that households, close contacts are very, much more likely. Become positive, so that's kind of the differentiation.
Like a test out of.
Yeah. Yeah, you can test out after on day, well, you test day six and then. Um and again, I guess, you know, uh. The experience has taught us these things. Um. We obviously want to balance uh. Public safety and wellness with, you know, the other side of the spectrum is telling somebody you can't come to school for fourteen days, right? That it really is hard in in opposition to our vision and mission. Um that, you know, C D C doesn't necessarily make recommendations based on mental health. They're making the recommendations based on the pandemic.
And if I am quarantined, we're still. Student could participate on Zoom. For all of those classes.
Yep, get to that here in a little bit. Um but transportation wise, uh again, face coverings are optional regardless of vaccination status. I do want to mention that it's part of the Esther fund, there's some discussion about federal money, but they're. They're um considering, uh they still are. Most interpretations, legal interpretations say, school buses are public transportation. So right now, it's still a mandate, a recommendation. Um at uh federal one, that um public transportation need to be required to wear masks. So um right now, we're starting with uh optional. If for some reason that changes, right, there's still discussion and legal interpretation of. You won't be able to get your Esther funds if you have a policy that doesn't require masks and public education. So that's kind of.
Public transportation.
What did I say? Oh, yeah, public transportation. So that's just kind of an F Y I, we're still monitoring that and looking for real. More definite, I guess, uh information on that. It's being debated right now. However, we did learn just uh logistically, it worked really well, that assigned seats mainly for discipline. Um it does obviously help, uh still, uh students who are close contact identify them. Um and sitting together as a family as well, help both of those, the uh potential close contact and discipline. And then the disinfecting procedures, although uh the C D C's newest, you know, research shows that disinfecting surfaces really is ineffective. Um um that it's still good practice for other viruses uh to disinfect them once per day. We have the equipment. We have the products, so I talked to Brian Peterson and uh. Doing once a day instead of twice a day is still good overall health wise.
If again, some people understand too that we're not on the budget, we need those funds to function day to day.
Yeah, so those.
So this isn't like we can't walk away from those funds. That was built into our budget now through the state of Wisconsin, just so. People online get that, like, we can't just opt out of it, cause we have a budget bust.
So used for operational, the the legislature and the financial budgets uh have said you have this federal money. You know, you need to count on that as using for your operational instead of COVID mitigation and recovery. It's a COVID recovery act.
But yeah, so I just wanted to get that out there because.
Uh food service, uh you know, last year went to point of sale with no comment touching. They use the barcode or IDs, so they won't be touching that same keypad every student, right? So continue with that. That's uh just good practice. Um self-service, uh go back to more self-service, uh you know, helping yourself grabbing the the stuff. Um touchless condiment dispensers, that's new technology. Um or just wave the tray underneath and for um Tammy said ketchup and ranch dressing. One of the two most common condiments, so they have, they have that equipment. Enhanced sanitizer obviously will be readily available uh as in the past. Face coverings are optional, again, for uh food service staff and students. Lunchroom, uh students may sit by pre-assigned court groups for tracing purposes. The principals uh will address that more specifically uh within their buildings and how they sit. But it's looking like they're still gonna cohort, uh you know, differently by grade level or by assigned seats and groups, et cetera. In the middle school and the high school. Um we have the additional lunch tables are ready, uh so continue with that practice of uh more spacing. Uh at lunch with the extra seating. Instructionally, as Jeff asked, uh for students again, are at home while ill, whether any illness, right? Um we aren't uh certainly as full in like uh we were last year. It's a little step back to more uh typical. Um there may be options, but it's hard. Uh we didn't want to necessarily commit to full in because we don't feel that there's gonna be as many students missing. Um with the full end livestream activities, uh it's gonna kind of be um. A judgment call uh based on the the learning activity, the classroom, the grade level, et cetera. Um. We, because we've done it for a year and have a lot more experience, I anticipate that being more common. But I just, we just didn't want to necessarily commit to that fold because it's really um. And a concern for this, for the teachers and their well-being, it's really hard being two places at once, planning two different. Things and I wanted to um make sure that they can be their best as well. And then typical illnesses like, uh you know, like you said, it it we al- we always have have and will continue to work out with arrangements and instruction and any missed learning instruction. Uh uh a case by case, student by student basis. That has never changed. Um there are alternatives, obviously students and families who are not comfortable with in-person learning, may enroll their students in S C C Virtual Academy and we have that contact information. There, and again, we ask them uh to commit to uh one semester at least. Uh um but you're able to enroll anytime, but you need to finish uh the semester if you do enroll in, you know, the middle of a semester. And again, that's because a lot of our providers, uh we have um invested in those courses for the semester. Just ask that folks honor that investment. And then athletics is pretty simple. We just are gonna follow all the W I A requirements. Um currently, the uh most recent guidelines that W I A has put out is regarding the vaccination guidelines. And again, that is hyperlinked in the presentation. Uh this will be again, this presentation and plan. Um if approved by the board tonight, will will be sent out and shared in all our usual communication forums. So that brings us to the end of our presentation, administrative recommendations for the board. Um questions, comments, amendments, further vetting that needs to be made.
This is the kind of thing that you release for families, parents, whatever look over.
Yeah, we sort of want to put that disclaimer slide, every other slide. Well, and again, intentionally, you know, it's August second, you have a month heads up. Prove tonight for folks to again make the decision. Again, I'm very comfortable the whole administrative team is and that there are options. For everyone, we're not. We're not uh. You know, requiring necessarily many things, right? And uh because things have changed. You know, again, the reason for many mitigation strategies was to flatten the curve. The peak of this pandemic happened in mid-November. Um you know, and again, we'll we'll currently monitor it. We we can't predict necessarily, but right now, uh we feel that this is a. A safe plan that balances both ends of the spectrum uh and allows our constituents options.
And I think if this is being disseminated, it probably is more during that disclaimer and at the end of the whole thing again. The loss over the beginning, you know, sure, okay, whatever, and then you're gonna read all the stuff and some people are gonna disagree with some of it. But there's that disclaimer at the end, that we've gotta be flexible with this situation. Cause we were last year, gotta be flexible with it, but maybe we'll throw that in there. As a reminder, we can't possibly predict everything.
Yeah, you know, COVID is never, you know. Everything that we read, right, is never gonna be vanquished, right? It's it's never gonna become extinct. Although the, again, the the plan was to mitigate and flatten the curve. Can't possibly, it doesn't look like it's ever gonna become extinct. Um but again, the vaccine and other things and more people developing immunity and herd immunity, you know, things have changed uh a year later. And that's, that's where we're at, we're trying to balance. The best interests of everyone and we can't please everyone, we recognize that, but. You know, like it, you have options. That's, again, go back to options, options, options.
One of the things that as we were developing last year. Was concern for employee safety and we had a number of teachers said, you know, I would. Come to school if there was, you know, I wouldn't want to be here if you didn't require masks. So has this. Been then and then shared with teachers so they know that, so they can make their choices?
Yeah, this, this uh, this got posted of the agenda and the link, I think Friday, so that was the soonest. Um the the teaching staff had the summer off and we did not bring them back in uh to vet this plan and develop this plan. No, like they have a month. For twenty one days uh to make their decisions. The things that have changed, right? Uh is is I think the vaccination changed. Um that's a lot of folks' perspective and folks can still wear masks uh denying them that opportunity.
I have a question again on that household plan, sorry. If you. What if you've had it? So you were positive in October and then. If you, what if you've had it, so you were positive in October and then the sibling gets it in December? I'm assuming you're still quarantined, because you're in the same household.
But, but the way I understand it, that's.
Regardless if you already had it or the vaccine, you're quarantined regardless if you're in the same household.
It sounds like it's kind of the public health, that's, that's all you're right.
Well, maybe, well, because their, because their recommendation to public health calls you. If you're vaccinated, you don't. They don't even recommend it, right, or if you've had positive COVID in the last sixty days, they're not gonna recommend it.
So should, are you, are you thinking, or?
I'm just.
Our policy should just go.
I'm just.
My public health recommendation.
Qualifying the question, because I'm assuming that one will come up, right, because both of those inside of public health would get you. The out of quarantine free card or whatever for a certain number of days.
As it states, yes, whether you've had it, whether, so that's a good point, um, you know, we didn't stress whether you've had it, but whether you've had it or have vaccination, have a vaccination. Um, that still would be, uh, this plan's recommendation, my, my personal recommendation. Yeah.
And then my next one, just like for the board discussion, I know we, a little bit, it's like, do we, we think this is the board vote? To vote on, or is it the discussion, I, I don't.
Haven't we passed every other, or? The other plan we've had, but this one for the board, right?
We, we did, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I mean, a consistency.
I mean, it's one, one time, right?
Well, twice, because they did summer school plan too, or something, right?
We didn't vote on it though, did we, summer school? It was just an FYI.
You did vote, you approved it.
Voted on that one, but we didn't vote on uh trip.
Correct, we did on this plan in August, did on the summer school plan in May. Um, and uh Esther funds also has a stipulation that it has to be presented um for public input. And that they said board meetings would suffice for that, so this is kind of the presentation and discussion and. Um.
And you'd have to present it, right, but it wouldn't have to necessarily be voted upon.
Would, I don't think have to, that's not the specific stipulation with Esther, but I would, I would like, yeah, be my recommendation for the board to continue.
Give them, I'll move it. This plan applies for A, if something changes, it'll change, it isn't set in concrete, but I think it's. Appropriate for the board to say, yeah, we think this is a good plan and we endorse it. Subject to changing as conditions change.
Would not at all be surprised if we had to change a few things, at least temporarily.
Yeah, because I'd have to come back and get voted on.
Yeah, that's what you say, oh, I think, what is the plan changer? I think this allows them to change it as conditions change, and it would be a report to us. Rather than a, oh, you, you can't change it because you've approved it.
Correct.
Plan itself, the plan itself.
Contemplates.
It's not a board policy, so it could require another.
And I don't think we want to make it that rigid that any changes need to come before the board, because medical changes like that sometimes. Need to be acted upon much quicker than this board can act.
We know, it, it just like, what is the purpose of voting on it, though, I'm just trying to ask.
I think to give public perception that the board has thought about it, received it, and agrees with it. This isn't Tim Whittaker's plan. He thought about it with his team, presented it to us, we questioned it, whatever, and said, yeah, we like it.
I think it represents kind of what I see in our community, for, for our, right now, like.
I mean, there will certainly be people that disagree with.
Yeah, I've already received a couple.
It was gonna go either way.
Yeah, because it's unique, you know, and it's.
Can I jump in, just clarify a couple things, so real quick before we.
We call the mic so folks online can hear you.
So I just wanted to really um communicate, so the middle school plan. For the academic part is someone is out, um, would be, will continue to record. A lesson per day, will continue to utilize the calendar. So the kids, any student that is out, period, COVID or not, will have access to the calendar, what was done. And if it, as, as Tim communicated, is an important lesson, it will be recorded. They'll also have access to recording, regardless, I think that is one practice that we learned from COVID. That is valuable, period, for any student that's out, so that will be something that um. Will, will continue to do at the middle school. Um, and uh, the, as we go to our conversations, I want to um. Maybe bring back Tim, if I remember in our conversation with Wendy. Um, we talked about if someone has been vaccinated or has had COVID in their family member. And we, we possibly would not quarantine them. If they were forthcoming, if they were forthcoming with, if they were vaccinated. Yes, it, we had, it, so that's the one thing.
And whose decision is that, Wendy's, County Health?
Wendy with County Health.
And she, you know, had something come up, she was gonna be available.
Right.
To help with those.
And it wasn't mentioned in the plan that the school, North Nurse Republic Health, or they know how that got the, or, or, is it with?
Right, they, she might be doing well, kind of want to put it in there, it with, um, Wendy. Collaborating with County Health will make a decision based on family members, I think would be the best way probably to. To adapt that, but um, I really wanted to communicate in regards to our plan with the academic part of the middle school. Because what we ran into last year. Is, is, it don't fault anybody, but it could be March first, and someone would say, you know what, I'm just not gonna send my. My child to school this week, so they're just gonna log on. You know, so we're gonna provide them all, all the materials they need and a video. But as Tim said, I think it would be really hard on the staff if we required that simultaneous way. But I really wanted to clarify in regards to, um, I didn't want us to go any further with that, because. I remember our conversation, Kurt, and I don't know if you correct me if I'm wrong, but we had talked about vaccinated family members. Um, possibly, and all to come to school based on conversation with Wendy, with Kelly, et cetera, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll look for clarification on that.
And what is like, that one was like, one that was like, very, was for, right?
Is the motion to say that we support the plan or we approve the plan or?
Asked that to approve, but obviously with the disclaimer that, you know, uh. Just wish presented, trust or enable the administration to make real-time changes and just keep informed. We, we changed, we had changed, close contacts changed, I mean, lots of things changed, uh, as the year went on, last year, and we didn't come every time, ask for approval.
I would, I would make a motion that we approve this plan presented by the administration with. Specific attention called out to this disclaimer that this cannot possibly address every scenario. That the pandemic might produce and real-time issues and decisions that are not identified, this plan will be addressed collaboratively between partner agencies. Trusting that you guys are willing to make the correct decisions with those partner agencies.
Any?
Um. Five-day-a-week classes, not gonna do the four, that would be back to five days.
Correct, five days, yep, the board approved calendar, yep.
So my only one though is that, do we have any pre-conceived chunks of data or curves or anything that would? Before it occurs, like, trigger us to look at it again? Um.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Instead of after the fact.
We've asked that even with the county, what's the benchmark at the county level or the school level of, you know, how many or what percent of kids have it or, you know? And, and they said, no, uh, nobody's comfortable making that.
If we have X number of pre-conceived cases.
Cases arbitrary or even not yet.
Two percent of students or thirty kids or whatever.
Yeah, so that, again, that would be made with partner agencies and public health, like, you know, we. I would not be surprised, right, if we have to change some things and we might have to uh have fifth grade go virtual for two weeks again, or, you know, something. So small cohorts, school building, whatever, we certainly reserve that, right, and again, I would not be surprised if we have to do that. But no, there is no set benchmark that'd say if we get to this. Uh, rate of positive cases that we would do, be.
This is, this is a basic client, her plan like, throw diarrhea, right?
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
This isn't like, we're cycling essentials, like.
Just confirm today, uh, thirty-nine area, six eleven schools, right now are all optional masks. Um, a lot of them are bringing plans to school boards tonight, right, and that may change, but all, talking to all the superintendents, everybody has masks. Optional, thirty-nine area schools. And we're fully aware of the CDC's recommendations that just came out last week or so.
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, next on the agenda, consideration approval of bus lease financing was. Saint Tander, Saint Tander, Saint Tander Bank?
Sure. I know we got four buses, Marshall, we really want to be delivered here, so. They're waiting to be delivered.
Um, Jen said this is, but it's right here.
Yeah, it's delayed till next year, whatever, it's all.
Deferred till August twenty twenty-two, yeah, I mean, you could see on the, the, huh, the percentage, the APR percentage there is incredibly low. It's uh two point five nine four percent. You know, we're getting four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of four buses. Budget-wise, we're able to make payments at six, three thousand a year, so. It's a, a win-win and a catch-up provision, right, for not getting new buses the last four years, so right back to a good spot. Yeah, except the leasing itself is not costing us much money.
I will say that Brian and Bus Groges have really helped the longevity of our buses. We've gotten more than our money's worth out of the buses, and we have. Thanks to Brian and his efforts, but also just the bus garages extended the life of our, get the most of ours.
Make a motion to approve the bus lease. We'll just for the board members, so this is in, in correspondence and in alignment to the presentation that you made to us last spring, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so just everybody knows this isn't like a one-off thing, right, this is an alignment to a plan that's been worked and everybody's in alignment to it.
Right, yeah, this is how we, I guess I ended my report last spring, asking.
Yep, so I just wanted to tie that up, because you guys weren't here for that, for your patient, so. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right? That'd be, just make you jump up and down, physical therapy. Right, next is the discussion, consideration approval of contract with a marketing survey firm.
All right, it just displayed it up, up there on the board, you know, you asked me to uh just kind of present information and compile it into a spreadsheet. Again, we have the three companies that uh interviewed, presented, Baker Tilly, School Perceptions, and Morris Leatherman. Uh, see the type of survey, uh, School Perceptions is inclusive. Whereas Baker Tilly and Morris Leatherman are both scientific random, random sample surveys. Uh, as far as the methodology, uh, Baker Tilly does phone interviews, School Perceptions does the paper mailer. Uh, they ask for paper survey returned or to go online. And then Morris Leatherman does phone interviews as well, um, they recommend sixty questions. Little longer, more inclusive, the success rate, uh, again, Morris Leatherman, uh, Baker Tilly. Um, obviously, put that at their school perceptions, we're all in ninety-two, ninety-five percent uh range as well. Um, the number of surveys that they recommended, uh, because. Baker, School Perceptions was inclusive, right, there's. No way to determine, right, how many surveys you're gonna get back, it's completely up to them, whereas the uh scientific random sampling, they keep making phone calls until they reach their. Uh, prescribed number, and for um Baker Tilly's two fifty, and for Morris Leatherman, four hundred surveys. Uh, in terms of price, see the comparison, Baker Tilly, seventy-nine dollars per uh phone interview survey, this is all inclusive in terms of uh getting the ser. Developing the survey, uh administering the survey and reporting the results. So uh for cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, which is seventy-nine dollars per two hundred, per survey at two hundred and fifty surveys. Uh, in terms of uh School Perceptions, um, it gave us ballpark of eight to ten thousand dollars uh for their part. Plus, we would pay printing and postage, which would be approximately eighteen hundred dollars is what it's cost for that number of uh through. A vendor we typically use for the printing, and that's thirty-four hundred, if it went to every box holder, we'd have to print thirty-four hundred. Um, there would be a half sheet, uh, on a postcard type material. And then plus the postage, which I, I didn't have readily available, or whatever we paid.
Time's about fifty, I think it's fifty-five cents, no, we get a discount, so it's fifty cents.
Yeah, thirty-three hundred, so eight to ten, plus the eighteen hundred for printing and about uh seventeen hundred dollars then for. Postage, if I'm doing the math correct, thirty-four hundred?
Fourteen-five to thirteen-five.
And then, um, for Morris Leatherman, again, their cost was not to exceed uh fifteen thousand, maybe less if we have less questions. That was based on the number of questions, again, they recommended sixty. And uh Baker Tilly was at the bulk, they were recommending more around the thirty to thirty-five. So I'm doing reference checks, I kind of blacked it out, uh, to keep them more confidential. Um, but I uh did um assure that Wald and Mark and Johnson's first choice was Morris Leatherman, their references.
Could we modify what they offered at all? The reason I ask is a. And you're gonna lose eight, what, sixty questions?
That's, that's, that's what I thought, but he was confident they'd do it.
I mean, they're very quick ques- quicker questions, though, I'm assuming, because he, when he said it wasn't.
I thought he said they still kept, tried to keep it to twenty minutes, you know?
And the other one thought it was fifteen minutes, but like a half, half questions.
I, I agree, that's my personal question, yeah. I trust this is what they do.
I mean, they, they do this for a living, so I guess I would trust their gut instinct, and just, if somebody called me and said, I've got a quick survey, I've got sixty questions, do next house.
Yeah.
I'd do the same with thirty, so I've had a good one to ask, like, I would opt out of every single one.
So would I.
I just, I get hung up.
I'd say yes to them, because I.
Sorry, we got enough you quick. It's sixty, I'd say, I, I would trust their mind, sorry, they've been doing it, but.
Did Wald, Mark and Johnson kind of give some reasons?
They've worked with both a lot, um, they just, I'm sorry, uh, they've not worked with School Perception much, but Baker Tilly and Morris Leatherman, they, you know, they. Um, that would be their, it'd be one for Morris Leatherman, two for Baker Tilly, three for School Perceptions, uh, based on their experiences with them. Because I know they, they said, you know, they're, they're spot on, they, they prefer the random scientific sample survey as well, that they're always spot on. Um, and uh. I think we have. Having that accurate information is critical in decisions.
I think we have to recognize that School Perception is just as much about communication.
Correct.
Than a survey, so.
You know, that's what I thought I had in here, yeah, priorities, they're more of a, this is more of the communication.
And we're still gonna have to do communication with, we.
Which we can, are correct. I, yeah.
Where they're having like questions specifically, which gets you thinking about.
Because they'll have a statement that says, oh, we're, you know, this, this is the school need and. Here's what our priority, you know, what we, why we think it's so, you agree or disagree.
So they communicated our point of view rather than.
They're the only control.
They have visuals too, like.
That's right, there was.
For Schools' Perceptions, yeah, so that, like, they were, they, again, one of their priorities was communication, whereas we, we, we. My opinion is we, we handle it separately, you know, we want somebody to do a survey.
So who did we use?
Prior, so two thousand fourteen, we used Morris Leatherman, uh, again, they were spot on with saying. So two thousand fourteen, we used Morris Leatherman, uh again, they were spot on with saying, you know, do this. Sixty percent. Uh approval and that's exactly what we got. Is there any success when they don't do, like a school doesn't do this at all, but?
Would make them unbiased, so they probably wouldn't agree to a, you know. We guarantee. You know, the result of the election, which they never could do, but. I think they wouldn't agree to that because it would make them have a stake in the results of their survey.
I'm not aware of any referents, not doing any, some, any type, whatever the type of survey, like, we, we did one with the inclusive model.
Yeah, I just.
And it was actually, it's a good question.
Close. It just seems like, you know, it's fifteen thousand dollars or something.
Like it was right there.
Your money.
Was in the margin there.
Right.
And they feel real confident, that was when told us.
My own view is that it's. Too important to the district to leave it at chance without doing the survey. Cause if the, the survey comes back and says you're crazy to do this. And then the board does it anyway and loses. No, we should take that input to modify what we think we can get approved, because it's too important. To not get something approved. And so.
Completely agree, I didn't know that was even an option.
Yeah, I mean, some people would say. Spend fifteen grand on it. Take your chances.
Um, I can't remember the term used, but you know, that's sixty question, like if you, just do the brush fire survey, thirty three questions, I remember that term, like. You know, for the reference, but he recommended this one, wherever you get more of a, getting the feel. Uh, but that's why I was so many questions, but. Again, I. I would.
Administration and recommendation.
I do.
And it is?
Morris Leatherman. We, they've. That's what I. Worked them in the past, great experience, Wold and Mark and Johnson. It's their first choice. Um, it's almost comprehensive. I certainly uh favor the scientific random sample survey method. Over the inclusive, we, we did the inclusive.
Any motion?
Uh, yes, please.
Any further discussion? I thought you were gonna look like you were gonna say something. Okay, all those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed?
I will reach Peter Leatherman, it's tomorrow and get the ball rolling and uh certainly will be part of. Uh, include you regularly, every, um, we'll keep the district needs and priorities on there and that'll be. Get your input, uh certainly share the. The questions and developing that, it takes some time, so. But I gotta, you know, we don't do it too soon, I gotta wait, we gotta wait for the community task force to do their work. That's something, so, so it'll.
Will they send a representative to the community task force or?
They typically. They would work with, with me.
Okay.
Um, and develop the survey questions.
Survey results to us. Not that the task, the task could probably have, it's all built out by this.
I'm sure, I think, I think they would if the timing coincides. Certainly, I think we'll. We might include them. Include them in the, in the, you know, here are the questions that we are drafting. If they're.
I'll do the promise it wouldn't be fifteen if they asked somebody to show up to every one of those meetings. That would burn the thirty.
Yeah, yeah. But they'll get a recap of like.
Exactly, so.
Recap of whatever the chairman.
Part is asking the right questions.
Maybe you, you talk to them, but just, just not questioning the choice, just. When they say sixty questions, is that based on? Our size or our? And our other, but is it, they call River Falls or Rice Lake and us, is it always sixty questions or is it?
Thought it was because it was two questions. Operational and the capital.
Too, so I'll, I'll get the answers to that.
And maybe that's low, maybe it's, maybe they, when they call other places, they ask eighty five, which. You know, I just didn't know if that was based on our sides.
No, it's, it's not, I think it's more of the type of two questions and then the, the, the.
There's like a baseline, like thirty ish, that was like a. Yeah, just like the general sense of it as a whole, it felt like that was the.
We can impose our rule that the survey has to end the same day.
No, I certainly recognize that, yeah, as a consumer, I would seem like a lot of questions. The less questions we have, the less money we pay, so let's keep it as efficient to accomplish all the things that we want to, so. To me, that's one of the biggest things to be determined, I think, this next one.
The problem is once you start cutting, though, you may, you may take like two questions out of one specific area and all of a sudden, okay, now your probabilities change.
So certainly deferred.
Alright, uh, next is just a reminder, some of the thank you and recognition nominees for Josh to read. The next meeting. Or no, is that Kurt?
It's, it's him, but I had to fill in.
Okay, no, sorry, you convinced it.
If I, if I need to read it, I will read it. That's.
I already put it on there. Kurt to read, sorry. Uh, important upcoming dates. Uh, those are all down there with the next meeting, uh the task force meeting, you can see around here like every other week for those. And then more to come, I think, if, if we have discussion on if we. Want to try to see if we can squeeze back to. One, especially with all these task force meetings, if we can. We just have a lot. Coming up there.
Only one I see missing on there is August sixteenth, we also have a teacher, we'd do better than, you know, committee.
Might not be here for the sixteen, so. Working vacation's not syncing up well right now, so.
Make sure that they put it up.
Um, next item is taking me to close session. I heard that we didn't have to read that. For the reasons.
I did not uh reach out to the lawyer and confirm that, but.
Second. Alright.
Alright, bye.
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 Right, whole session.